I'm Sharon Rannells. I'm with Parks and Recreation Director. And also with me today is Valerie Summer. Valerie is out there recruiting people to come in, I think. But I think we can... I'll introduce her as soon as she comes in. Okay, so just quickly, there are like four things that we would like to get done today. The first one is I would like to give a little presentation on the draft Parks and Recreation Master Plan and give the public an opportunity to make comments. And since we have quite a bit on the agenda today, it'll be fairly brief. However, what I do want to make sure you know is that if you get one of these little slips of paper, you can go online and review the master plan in much more great detail. So the link to the master plan is on here. And then also other links that you would find useful. Okay, so the other... Our other purpose is just as we're completing our... It's been a one-year process for our master plan... Oh, I shouldn't have used Councilmember Matsumoto, just came in. So just as we're wrapping up our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, this is Valerie's opportunity to launch her... She's doing a similar strategic plan. And we want to make sure that our process informs her process and that we are sure to integrate overlapping topics that both... that overlap. We also have Jim Steele on the back, our Assistant City Manager, just came home. Okay, so that's our second purpose. The third thing we want to get done today is we're conducting a town hall meeting. And we're here today to receive public comments, not only on the Parks and Recreation and Library issues, but any other issues that are on people's minds. And for that purpose, there's a survey that many of you have probably seen. And there's a link to that survey on our little handy-dandy sheet here. So you can either take that survey online, or we have paper copies here up front. And these again are just about the public's priorities in terms of how the city resources can best be allocated. So we'd love to get your response on that survey form. Okay, so let's see. We're going to do the town hall meeting. And then after a brief presentation about the master plan, we're going to ask you if you'd like to. We gave you some dots as you came in, and this would be an opportunity for you to take your dots. We have like eight different topics that Valerie and I came up with. And these also emerged from the master plan process that Parks and Recreation did as things that the public was really interested in pursuing. So those topics are around the room, and you can walk around. And if you find something that really resonates for you, you can take your dots and place them there. We have one color of dots for adults, which I think is green, and another color of dots for children. So if your kids want to go around and say what they think looks interesting, they can take their little orange dots and place them right on the boards. Okay, so I think I covered that. And then finally, I'm glad I made notes because I get notes and I forget to say things. We'd like to encourage you guys to go out and enjoy the day. This is Parks Alive, Streets Alive today. Oh, Mayor Garberino just came in. Here's our mayor.
Hi, everybody.
So there's lots of activities going on. They're all free today. And the Parks Alive, Streets Alive is really a county-wide initiative. It happens every year on the first Saturday day, and South City gets really on board with that. And then, of course, it's the opening of the farmers' market. So one other thing I want to say is we have some carrot cash for you guys because you're so awesome for coming out. So everybody here, if you didn't get some already, Kelly will give you $3 worth of carrot cash. And then we want you to go over to the farmers' market and get some healthy fruits and vegetables. As far as our event, that's Parks Alive, Streets Alive. These little programs are around, and it tells you everything that's going on today. There's a schedule in here if you want to do the different activities, or your kids want to do different activities. And these are posted around as well. So any questions so far? Nope, just... Okay, so at this point, I'm going to launch right into the master plan presentation. We have it up here on the board. So what I want to show you is we have a completed draft of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and here it is. This isn't what the final cover's going to look like. We have Billy Houston here today taking pictures. And I hope some of the pictures from today will end up being our cover for the actual final draft of the master plan. So if you'd like to look at it in hard copy... I don't have enough copies for everybody. We're trying to be environmentally sensitive today. But you can go online and look at it, or you can certainly look at hard copies here. So in addition to what I'm going to talk about, part of the master plan, there's an appendix that has some of the data. If you're a data person, you want to look more specifically at some of the telephone or survey results there in here. Another piece of the master plan is a study of Sign Hill. So we had kind of an environmental study done to identify some of the issues facing that open space and some of the stewardship recommendations that a consultant would have. So all of these documents are available. And I should also mention that we did retain a professional outside firm to help us with this study because, of course, when you evaluate yourself, it's not really maybe as useful as having an outsider come in and evaluate your operation with a more neutral perspective. So we use Gates Associates for that analysis. This process, our master plan process, started one year ago, pretty much today. And I wanted to ask, how many of you guys were here a year ago today when we had this master plan meeting? So we thank you so much. This is the outcome of all of that year's worth of study. And we invite you to look at the document and see if your feedback is in there. That's the purpose for presenting it to the public, is make sure we got it right and that we heard all the feedback that was given. Okay? So I'm just launching here. You know I do this, right? Okay, so what is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan? The purpose of it was to define core services, create some standards for maintenance as well as for programs, set community priorities, and to create an implementation strategy. So I'm just going to kind of fly through here. If you have any questions, just stop me. Some of the factors that influenced our master plan, where we wanted to... You know, we have a pretty good idea of our customers and their needs, but what about the folks that they're not using our services? So where are the needs, the unmet needs? We know that costs are increasing, our budget is limited, so that we wanted to look at how can we reconcile that? What are the community values? And try and accommodate or think ahead to what our projected growth is going to be. So we actually ended up with over 1,300 people giving us feedback on the master plan. And we did that in several different ways. So we had a random statistically significant telephone survey, which was random. And the great thing about that is you're reaching people who may not be your customers already. As I mentioned, last year at this time, we had a big community workshop, similar to this one. We did another community workshop the night of movie night on July 18th. The consultant interviewed staff. And then we also conducted some little focus groups or focus groups, looking at the topics that were emerging. So as we interviewed people and said, "What are you interested in? What are our unmet needs?" These are the topics that sort of rose to the top. Performing arts, sports, aquatics, seniors, and childcare. So we gathered together some, you know, a group of 10 or 12 people to kind of drill down on more specifically what those folks would... what their interests and needs are. So just briefly, it's interesting, the results of all of these different feedbacks were pretty similar. Not exactly the same, but pretty similar. So for the telephone survey, we found 57% of people would like to see improvements in maintenance, 56% wanted to expand in preschool, 54% improvements in playgrounds, 54% improvements in trails, and 53% improvements to the Orange Park pool. So these are just some of the top ones. There was lots of other feedback, but these are the ones that filtered to the top. So when we got to the question of what would y'all be willing to pay for? It wasn't necessarily exactly the same, but 62% felt preschool, 59% playgrounds, 58% improved maintenance, and 58% the pool improvements. And of the telephone survey, the top, the very top options that, you know, in that little spreadsheet there that rose to the top for being willing to pay and also the greatest need were preschool, playgrounds, maintenance, and Orange Park pool. Just to set aside, the consultant was really impressed in our survey with, I believe, 80% of people that were asked had visited one or more parks in the last six weeks. And they felt that was extremely high for a community like ours. So we know our residents are really using the parks and the public buildings that we have. So just quickly moving on to the community workshop, this was a little bit... This kind of is a visual of what that process looked like, similar to what we're doing today. We took comments, people put their dots on, and so we're doing the same thing today. If you have specific comments, staff will be around at these stations, and they have a little post-it notes, and feel free to give us your comments. Gives you an idea. So from the community workshop, the needs that rose to the top, again, indoor recreational pool, a large performance venue, a facility for teens, more gyms, and wood floor studio. Those were the ones at the top. And that's on the adult side. The children, on the opposite side there, they wanted splash pads, an indoor recreational pool, performance venue, some similar, some similar but different percentages. Okay, so of the three kinds of research that we did, looking at the phone survey, the workshop, and the staff interviews, you can see there's an awful lot of consensus as to what people felt were the top 10 needs. Park maintenance, renovation of the pool, sport field and lawn improvements, a performance venue, expanded childcare, improving our trails, improving safety of our parks. Those, everybody, there's a great deal of agreement there. When it came to playground renovation, we found more interest or the phone survey and the workshops. And staff didn't identify that as much, and I think that's because they're aware of the plans to... There are plans to improve playgrounds, which we're aware of, that the public may not be. And then this last one here about equitable access, that staff identified not so much the public, is an interesting one. And I think that's because staff is always very sensitive to wanting to remove all barriers and make sure that everyone can participate in our programs. And then we have the results of the second community workshop where we were able to... I think at that one, we had identified some of these themes and had different boards up. So we're able to drill down a little bit more on what people were interested in. So that all to distill all of that into what we now have goals and recommendations that have emerged out of the master plan. So this first one, provide adequate parkland to meet existing and future needs. So we took a look at the current population, and then that second column is the population is projected to increase by 20... 30? By another 10,000 people. So what the master plan is trying to do is not only look at what our park needs today are, but what's planned ahead. So that if we did, if we have 10,000 more people, are we taking appropriate action now to plan ahead for that? And so this is really hard for me to read. But basically, the national standard for parkland is three acres per thousand, and we took a look at, are we meeting that? So our current park acreage is about, is a little less than three acres per thousand of population, just based on property that the city owns. But if you then continue down to, if you add open space and school grounds, we actually are closer to a little more than five acres per thousand. So the opportunity there is for us to expand utilization of school property as part of the whole picture of being able to provide parkland to the community. But then if you move out to 2030, we can see that with the addition of 10,000 more people, we will definitely be well below the three per thousand if we don't take some proactive action now to plan for future park space. So that's kind of the takeaway from that slide. And so here you see the population with an increase of 10,000 people. We would need 30 acres of parkland, again, three per thousand, to serve those 10,000 people. And then you look at the number of employees, it's projected to be another 28,000 employees in town. And that standard is, I believe, 0.5 acres per thousand employees. So again, we'll need 44 more acres by the time we get to 2030. So how can we create that? Well, the consultants identified about 50 acres of potential park space. And again, part of that, we do have opportunities at what we call the Chestnut Study Area. There's opportunities out at Oyster Point, and opportunity to expand Orange Park, as well as lots of linear parked bicycle and pedestrian potential connectors. So those are some of the opportunities that we could come up with, that additional 44 acres in the next, before 2030. And of course, another recommendation is that we strengthen our joint use agreement with the school district so that we can make better use of existing land. So one of our goals was to provide equitable access to parks, trails, and open space. And so there's some really good maps in the master plan that kind of show you how far, you know, apart all of our parks are by neighborhood. And the goal, we did prioritize, there are some underserved areas in South San Francisco, specifically downtown and Sunshine Gardens, which, both of which don't have as much developed park space as some of the other neighborhoods. And the recommendation is that there be a park within walking distance of every home, and within walking distance would be a quarter of a mile. So of course, there's lots of statistics about the health benefits of just the availability of green space, the fact that kids, it's a passive green space. It doesn't have to necessarily be programmed activity, but it really makes a difference if children have access to space where they can play. So another one of the goals is to improve connectivity. Centennial Way is a wonderful resource, but we want to make it more accessible so that all parts of town can get to Centennial Way or to the Bay Trail out at Oyster Point, and to reduce any barriers to park use. So you might say, "Well, what's a barrier to park use?" Some of the things that people identified were safety concerns. Is there a perception whether they're actually safe or not? What is the perception of safety? Is the... Do they look safe? Do they feel safe? As well as just the location of the parks. Okay, another goal is to provide amenities for multiple user groups, and that in addition to children. So one goal is to renovate playgrounds. And I think you may see around town, we're in the middle of four playground renovations right now. So these are some of the things that emerged from the master plan, and we're already kind of moving in that direction as far as renovating playgrounds out in the neighborhoods. To update and reprogram underused parks and to integrate art into our parks. And that came from the surveys. People were really respond to the art that, the pieces of public art that we do have. Another goal is to provide quality maintenance to ensure usability of our parks. So a recommendation came out that we increased staffing, which I think we're making some headway there. Increase funding and develop a deferred maintenance strategy. So I don't have time to really go into great detail, but one piece of this master plan was we did go through each and every one of our parks and identify all of what we deferred maintenance. And so as you know, during the downturn, when budgets was, the budget was very tight, some things were deferred. And so we now have a pretty good list of what every park needs and an estimated cost to do that. And these are things like irrigation, the turf, the playgrounds. And so now that we have a better idea of what that estimated cost is, it helps us be able to plan ahead, to do that in phases over the next five to 10 years. Here's another goal, to meet existing and future needs. And this is on the sports fields front, and I see some of the sports field enthusiasts in the audience, so this may resonate for them. One of the things that we did see is that South San Francisco is, we benchmarked our city against similar cities. And the similar cities were, we looked at Milpitas, San Bruno, and Redwood City. So why those cities? Because they're similar in population and because they're similar in demographics in terms of income level and such. And we are a little underparked on the sport field side of things. So if you look at the number of rectangular fields, the number of baseball fields, and then project ahead into the future, how many fields will we need with the additional 10,000 people? We do see a need for additional sport fields.
I hope that in the future, we have some expectation that we can have a soccer field.
Definitely. And though some of you guys have been around for a long time, I know about the Orange Park Master Plan. What we call the Calwater property, which is adjacent to Orange Park between here and Chestnut, there is a plan for a soccer field there. But there's, of course, a few hurdles. We have to acquire the property first, and we have to come up with the millions of dollars that it will take, but yes. And then we also like to upgrade some of our existing soccer fields. Unfortunately, the soccer field we have right here at Orange Park, as you can see, is extremely heavily utilized. So it's very difficult for us to maintain it at the level we'd like to. So to do that, you kind of need a fenced, lighted field, and so we are looking at that. And yes, definitely, we only have one city on soccer field, which is Orange Park. And then the district has the Westboro Soccer Field and Hillside in Altonoma. But then, so we'd like to see better utilization of district property as well. And the other thing that came out of the master plan is our sports groups felt that if we could just do a better job of maintaining what we have, they placed a higher priority on that than the expansion and the creation of new fields. I think, is that fair to say?
Fair to say.
Fair to say? Okay. Okay, so again, we don't want to go, as the population increases, we want to at least maintain the ratio of fields per population, improve playability. And we're certainly looking at synthetic turf, very controversial, so if we get some fans and it's not fans, but that's something that we would study. And again, continue and expand joint use. And I mentioned the Orange Park Master Plan, that emerged as a high priority, particularly I was very surprised, you know, you think you have a, I think staff has a pretty good pulse on the community, and we were pleased that our, what came out of the surveys were pretty consistent. But I was surprised by the interest in the aquatics. Lots of people really value the Orange swimming pool, and most, a lot of kids learn to swim there. And part of the Orange Park Master Plan is to expand the pool and bring it out, add on to the existing pool. And we also heard that from people, they were more interested in that than they were building a brand-new swimming pool. We also heard interest in a multi-generational, multi-use community center. And certainly, that's the trend, the trend of senior centers that just are kind of little silo standing in senior centers. It's not so much the model that we're seeing now. It's more intergenerational, where you have joint use and take advantage of every square foot. So one of the ideas that not only emerged from the master plan, but something that is part of the limitations with the existing library, is the idea of co-locating Parks and Recreation and the library in a new facility. And that would provide some efficiencies, some synergies, program, overlapping, and shared resources. So I think as you look at these boards around the room, it really illustrates what some of those opportunities are. Because really, what Parks and Recreation and the library do are very linked in very many ways. And traditionally, those two departments have been kind of separated, and it would make so much more sense to have them integrated. We heard a desire for facilities for performing arts. I think people know our studio space at the Municipal Services Building is extremely limited. We have 250 little ballerinas that are dancing in a tiny little corner of the Municipal Services Building. So expanded dance and performance space was a strong desire. Expand programming capacity and increasing staff would be required for that. And then we also heard people asking, they would like to see improved access to open space, including Sign Hill and the Bay Trail and the Bayfront out at Oyster Point. So again, I was very glad to get this biological resource assessment of Sign Hill. It's a tremendous resource that we have right in our backyards that really needs stewardship and careful planning. So I think the other thing is as we go forward applying for grants, to have these resources, a master plan that's already had community input and some idea of what species are on Sign Hill and what are, what conservation plan should we have, it'd be very helpful going forward, maybe we can get some grant funding for some of this work. Another goal that came out of the master plan is to continue to improve sustainability. And I don't think I could complete this little talk without talking about water. We know water's going to be huge. It's increasingly an issue for parks and landscape. And not just water sustainability and how much turf do we have? Can we replace turf, ornamental turf with native planting and yet preserve our playfields? I think we're going to have to strike a balance there. Another goal, and not just water, but certainly energy. Because the other thing I should mention is, you know, Parks and Recreation, we include facility maintenance. So we also are responsible for the energy efficiency and the other kinds of efficiencies for our city. Another goal is to continue to upgrade technology. So I've gone on kind of long. At this point, one of the technological innovations that we have implemented, and I'm going to let Greg speak to, is this new program called Engage SSF. So I'll let Greg talk about it a little bit.
Should we ask questions?
Yes.
Since we're afforded by smaller cities who don't have the capability or the land capacity that South San Francisco has, in figuring out this plan, do we know how many of our neighboring cities utilize our facilities? I know you can tell by registration because there's a certain idea on the classes, but is there any communication?
We did not specifically study that, but I think that's a very good point. We could tell by registration what percent of our registrants are non-residents. And I'm going to say probably about 20%, but that's totally off the top of my head. We'll have to look at that. But like, if you look at here, I was telling an anecdote about last year. I went out and tried to recruit some of these soccer players to come over for our master plan. And as I talked to people, I'd say about half of them said, "I don't live in South City." So I don't have any good data for you.
And just because of the usage, if you're projecting, you know, the next 15 years and 10,000 increase, you know, the other cities will have a projected growth and use as well.
They should do the same thing that we're doing.
Well, no, we, I think if they use our facilities, they can start factoring.
To grow their own as well. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Greg Neriotti, and he's going to explain to you a little bit about what Engage SSF is and how you can use it.
Sure. Thanks, Sharon. So how many of you know what Engage SSF is? Do you have you? Do you see the app? So as Sharon mentioned, Engage SSF is a new technology we're really pushing, and it's not really just for parks. We use it for public works projects as well. It's a new mobile application for reporting whatever concerns you may have. We use it for non-emergency issues. So if you have ideas of how we can help improve our park system, or you see graffiti or those sorts of things, that would all be inputted to this application. Of course, if there are emergency issues, we do urge you to call 911 for those sorts of things. There's a direct link to that. The really cool thing about this app is not only can you submit requests, but you can also see what the status of it is. So we immediately acknowledge that we have seen a request, but then we also follow up and say this has been taken care of, or we need more time to take care of this issue. So as I mentioned, you can download the application for your mobile phone, tablet, on the App Store, Google Play, some other Android devices. Or...
When did you implement this program?
It's been almost a year, right, Mike?
Maybe six months.
Six months or so? Okay. Yeah. And again, it's not just for parcelated issues. So it could be a half issue downtown with graffiti or you seeing, whatever. I mean, as long as it's something the city would take care of, it's a great app, great place to...
Do people have to identify themselves?
You don't have to. You don't have to identify yourself. That's actually a good point. Use it for code enforcement issues too. So there's certainly sensitive issues that we wouldn't want to make. And as I was saying, there's also a web link on it too. So if you do not have a mobile phone or tablet, you can certainly log on to your computer and do that. Do that. Oh, correct.
A question. Then how, well, if someone has reported a case or situation through this one, how is it determined that the case is closed? The reason why I ask is because my husband has reported a case about a garbage can have been removed from a small park. So everybody is dumping garbage on the ground. He reported it, and no action was done. And then after doing his post, no explanation whether somebody acted on it or why there's no action.
Okay, well, that's a very good note. I'll pass on to our public works guys. But if you put in your phone number or email, we would contact you once it's been completed. Or you can go onto our website here, and all issues that have been afforded by the public are made visible. So you can do this from your app, or you can do it from the web rather.
There is a, when you get the notice that says it's been closed, you have the option to disagree. And you can go back, you can go back in and say, and make another comment and say, "No, it's not." Exactly. That actually happened to one of mine. And it got reopened. So please engage. It is a new system. So far, we've had about a thousand, we've had over 1,000 requests. We're running at about a 98% completion rate. Most things we can do in that same day or the next day, but our average time to respond is five days right now. We're trying to get that lower. But it is new, we're working out the bugs. But absolutely, you can disagree if you don't like the result. Thanks, Mike.
So is there an opportunity to use your mobile phone and take a picture?
So is there an opportunity to use your mobile phone and take a picture of what you're looking at so that you can identify exactly what the problem is?
Exactly. And actually, that is a huge help to us if you can do that. So if you want, I can walk you through this demo here, how you can do it. It's very similar if you do it on your phone. But let's just type in an address. Instead of just typing an address, we could use the map here to define where you are trying to draw. And we don't have to. Next one, we would select the category. So you can see here, not only can you ask for service, you could also give us more internal requests or make a complaint.
Greg, it's not showing yet.
Oh. Great.
Yeah. All right. So.
How about that? Okay. Try it again. Anyway, but yes, sort of the way where you can upload.
It's the opposite of what you think.
Okay. So for example, let me say Canadian Parks. All right. Number. So I can add a description and then I can upload an image here. So there's my Canadian picture. Again, same thing from your cell phone, it will automatically upload once you select it. And then once you hit submit, that will automatically be forwarded to our maintenance app, at which time they would continue to comment. So I suppose we would close it out. What's that?
What is that number? Number that you got?
Which number?
That nine five.
Oh, that, that would be your phone number. I've typed in random.
Oh, boy. It's not a kind of complaint number.
No, no, there's no, there's no complaint number. Once you do submit it though, you will get emails indicating if you have received your issue. We need to update that.
Hi, Greg. I'm trying to download it from my smartphone. I put in Engage SSF. And this is what I see. I understand. Is this what it looks like when you, before you download?
Yes. Correct. So, right, so when you do download it, it'll have the city seal, not say you made this.
Can I just make an under challenge and they taught me and it's wonderful. You open this app and it says report and if you can take a picture of it and then it says issue title, description, and set. It really is cool. And if I can do it, you can.
It's also, you see that, what's the conflict?
Secret fix. It's the same thing.
Maybe we'll have a training.
Any other questions? Or the library, library?
Hi, welcome again. I'd like to go back to the introductions very briefly. We have Councilmember Farid Gupta is in the house. And the gentleman who just spoke is our city manager, Mike Futrell. And also, my wonderful library board member, Valerie Lambertson is here and she's covering it up. She has this year's summer reading theme t-shirt, Read to the Rhythm. And I should have worn one myself, sorry about that.
Nice.
So just like parks and recreation, the library is embarking on a strategic planning process that will continue to build excitement and support for the direction this, our city is going in. Many of you are on mailing lists and email lists for the master plan. As part of the strategic planning process, we'd like to invite you to participate in some of our upcoming focus groups and meetings. We'll be scheduling them in June and July. And we do have an interest card that we'll be passing out after this presentation and we'd love it if you would sign up and participate and dream with us, look to the future and let us know what programs and services you would like to see in your public library. Also, I know Sharon mentioned the survey and you've probably all seen it from time to time, but it's really important to give feedback to the city. We want to maintain a safe city with a high quality of life and prioritizing programs and services is really important for all of us. So you can fill the survey out today, give it to any staff member, return it to any public building, and an easy way to do so would be to go to the city's website at ssf.net. On the left-hand side, there's a ribbon that says, "Join the Conversation." Link to that and you can take the survey. Sorry, I'm too close. So now let's talk about our vision for South San Francisco. We'll get a little clicker. One more. As we look at community priorities and dreams, we have the opportunity to work together on a plan to build a new seamless library community center in South San Francisco. Oh, sorry. I'm also a loudspeaker. What do I mean by seamless? You're going to come to our new wonderful building and you're not going to think, what does Park and Rec have today? What does library have today? You're, you'll just think, what programs and what services are here in this fabulous building today? Both the library and the Municipal Services Building are over 50 years old. Both of them aren't up to the latest seismic safety codes and they no longer meet the needs of a 21st century community in the future. Our holodeck and set it to be an old British library that you can sit in a leather on chair and read a book. Or you hook your child into a digital music studio so she can record her Grammy-winning hit. We'll have something for everyone in our new facility. What I'm going to do now is play a very short video of a wonderful community technology center as part of a library in Florida. They have the books on one floor and they have a community center on a floor full of all of the techie things that we're looking forward to in the future for our joint vision of our, our center. So let me see if I can do this right.
Hello and welcome to the Dorothy Lumley Melrose Center for Technology, Innovation, and Creativity. The Melrose Center is a one-of-a-kind 26,000-square-foot area where you can work on your projects and turn your ideas into reality. Let's have a look. The Melrose Center was made possible by a generous gift of $1 million from the Kendrick B. Melrose Family Foundation and opened to the public on February 8th of 2014. This is Tech Central, an auditorium-style open meeting space where we host our presentations and programs. These programs are open to the public, so check our calendar for more information. Our turnkey video production studio includes professional cameras, lighting and sound equipment, a green screen for chroma key, and more. Record the next big hit in our audio production studio with a professional-grade mixing board, monitors, and Pro Tools software. Our audio studio space is large enough to fit a band with a drummer or even a choir. Our sound booths allow you to make solo recordings, whether you're a guitarist, a singer, or recording a podcast. Our photo studio includes all of the equipment you need to create the perfect photo shoot, including a DSLR camera, lighting, backdrops, and a light box for product photography. All three of our studios are equipped with the tools you need to pursue your creative dreams. All you need to bring is a device to save your work on. Our state-of-the-art creative workstations include six Macs and six PCs, all equipped with professional-grade software like the Adobe Creative Suite. All of the seating in our creative workspace is designed to encourage collaboration and built-in power outlets allow you to stay connected. Our large digital media wall is a fantastic tool for presentations and it's not just for looks. Patrons can reserve the digital media wall to gain a new perspective on their projects. The Fab Lab is where we teach our science, technology, engineering, and math classes. We offer classes in basic electronics, 3D printing, and more. The Melrose Classroom is where we teach a variety of our classes, like Intro to Flight and the Adobe Creative Suite Fundamentals Courses. The desks and chairs are movable to encourage collaborative learning. Our simulation lab includes four different full-size simulators, including a driving simulator, a flight simulator, and two different construction simulators. Reserve one of our editing bays to work on your projects in a distraction-free environment. Up to four patrons can work together using Pro Tools or the Adobe Creative Suite on either Mac or PC. If you're not familiar with how to use our equipment, we can help. Equipment training classes are available for all of our studio spaces. Access to all of our resources starts with the general orientation, which is free to anyone who wants to sign up. Check our calendar or speak with a staff member for more information. We hope to see you soon at the Melrose Center. Join us today.
So isn't that a great look into our future? We can have this, in fact, five years from now, there'll be even better tools to be, to take advantage of. So we're going to conclude with an exercise for everybody. We have dreams and themes around the room. Sharon and I used some of the feedback we have received over the years from Library and Park and Rec participants and patrons. And we have developed a set of themes that we think are important to our community. You all have dots that you received at the door. We'd like to have you distribute the dots along the boards. What is important to you? What is a priority to you for this new vision of a seamless library community center? You can put all your dots in one place, you don't need to spread them out. And I'll briefly go through the topics, the themes. Computer literacy and new technologies, performing and visual arts, early learning, lifelong learning, workforce skills, civic engagement, and of course, safe spaces for youth and teens. This activity is meant to jumpstart our new library community center project planning and start building our community vision. And this is just a wonderful day also to take advantage of what's going here on the Streets Alive, Parks Alive events, as well as our opening day at the farmer's market. So please take advantage of these events after this program, but go around the room with your dots and we really appreciate your feedback.